Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Westminster School Board meeting.
It's six o'clock and I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting of the board of the Westminster Community Schools. And our first order of business is that to call us to order at six o'clock. And we always love to have Fact TV here, so that community can have a chance to kind of listen in later and see who's here and what we discuss. And in that spirit, I'd like to have introductions over on the room. And I'll start with the superintendent.
Andy Haas, Superintendent Schools.
Mary Berry, Westminster Board. Aaron Blanchard, Westminster Board.
Tony Heston, Westminster Board Chair.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Board.
Liz Hardy, Mrs. Southwest School. Paul Hornet, Admin's and Chief's Department and Board Reporter.
Vazina, Helping Up with Finance.
Absolutely.
And Mandy Walsh, Librarian and Director of School Coordinator.
Snow Beer, Studio Y.
Outstanding. What's wonderful to have you go here as well tonight. I'm looking for any communications and public type. Do we have any?
No, it's time to write it this time.
All right. With that then, we do need to review and approve the minutes from September 7th. The whole sentence to the board, so if anybody has any corrections who came with me. I actually have one to propose, and Andy will need your help with this. This is under old and unfinished business. It's under the traditional neighbors. And there's a sentence that says, it's not quite complete, but members probably discussed ADM funds that stay with the school in the town the school resides in. I think, I think we need an addition, which is however, if a student attends a school out of a district, neither school gets the ADM.
That is correct.
Is what you reported to. So we need that, we need that correction. So you insert a colon. After resides in, in a comma, however, if a student attends school out of district, neither school gets the ADM. That's, so with that correction, we had a motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that correction? I said, look, okay, Margie, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, just say aye. Aye? Any questions? Okay. Our next item of business is reports. And I should have called for the suggestion of the agenda earlier. This is all already on the agenda, but we'd like to move the staff presentation. We could give you a chance to leave and choose to. So Janelle and Mandy, please go ahead and leave behind it.
First, we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to share some of the things that we're doing with you. There's so many things, wonderful things that are happening at WCS. It's just a great opportunity to speak to you guys and share some of the different going on. One thing that Mandy and I have been able to do is collaborate. And we love to collaborate at WCS. And last year, we built a whole collaboration around social studies and pollinate science and pollinators that went very, very well. And so this year, we decided to expand on it after we took the class. We attended the C3 training this August. And working from our pollinators unit, we sort of worked backwards using that model to enhance our community building activities that we've started the last couple of years with. The first few weeks of school, Janelle is not at Studio Y, so we're able to work together using my schedule, meet with all the students. And last year, we did nature-based and garden projects. Community-based garden projects. And this year, we're building on that. Right, and it's really fun for kids, but it's really fun for us. It just takes, I don't know, it enhances the experience when we can play off of each other and share all the different things that connect us. So Matilda Maple Tree, this is a letter found out in the garden. And we started this project together. So in the next slide, it just shows the beginnings of the project. And it's just like little clips, and hopefully it will explain itself.
WCS in Kings of the Village. In our garden, we discover many wonderful things.
Oh, that's a good one. Start over.
Page two. Earth and seeds.
Yes.
Page three. WCS in Kings of the Village. In our garden, we discover many wonderful things. Vegetables, flowers, and seeds, mysterious seeds with letter. What do we do with seeds at WCS? Plant them up, of course. And then, we began designing the village to make our seeds healthy. We are going to create a community. We even use natural materials. We are even going to have a transportation station. Enjoy watching our village grow.
So that was the first part of our journey together. On the next slide, we did.
WCS.
These are the students building the village. And what's really great, we have a farm school event coming up at the end of October. And we are going to plant our village. Along with the mystery seeds that grew mysteriously fast. They actually really did. I was very surprised. I didn't think they would grow. We just had a whole discussion around with the kids. I was like, these seeds are not going to grow. It's been four days. It's over the weekend. What are we going to do? And Andy's like, oh no. We're going to, and the kids talked about watering them and the sun and how we take care of them. And the next 24 hours, they were huge. For real, they like, they really grew. It was magical. These are pictures of them planting, building, working together. And it was first, second, and third grade, we're doing their building. If you go to the library, they're going to say, still in the library, we're kind of preserving the village to put out closer to the event at the end of October. Yes, and we're going to, we're going to climb back into our village towards the end of October. Kind of talk about structure a little bit more, making them more sturdy. And then we're going to have a scavenger story hunt around it for, and to discover. And some extensions of this might be, we have a first grade class who is thinking about mapping, because that's part of our social studies curriculum. So I told them a space in the garden, it's probably about the space we're in here. That looks like roads that our villagers will go in. And then they'll map that, first grade will map what we have growing and the buildings that they've built to kind of create a replica of Westminster. And even to like extend that, some of the items that we use are not going to degrade because they weren't natural materials, they were recovered. And so having that discussion with older students, like, oh, what do you notice about how things evolve? And what things don't, you know, go back to nature? So there's a lot of different ways we can go with it. Mostly we're having fun. And that's our village.
Yes.
Any questions?
Question?
We read some really great books that went with us, too. Building the Dream, Westlandia, Raps and Boxen, other alternative community sort of spaces.
Give us a sense more of your time frame. Just kind of walk us through, you saw every grade level?
We collaborated with every grade level, but not on this project. We had a couple other projects go into. And that was the first three weeks of school, so that three-day week, four-day week, and five-day week, which is, it's kind of great to do this because I don't see every class. And then things are a little bit out of balance, so working on this together. And then I launched it to my thing four weeks later. So I would say that was the first three to four weeks of school, we worked on this. But with the fifth and sixth graders, we did a cryptography project. Which is part of, they're going to start taking more ownership of our newsletter. Correct. And doing drawing and cryptography, so we had to teach that stuff.
Liz, why don't you make some comments from the principals who spend it around why you converge this?
Well, it's awesome to see the beginning from the 3C course that the SU offered in August to putting that learning in action. And it melds so well with the community. The first six weeks is all about community building and routines and how we use our spaces and how we use all our materials. And having something so authentic as what Janelle and Mandy did, it's just high interest and something we can grow throughout the year. I am so fortunate that we have two of them in the building because it really just was really organic with them and their teaching.
Well, and it's great to have a community that supports that. Yes, I was going to say that. Those support's what we do too, so. Can you tell us about the kids taking more ownership of the newsletter component? Because I really liked that when I read that. It was very cool. In case you guys didn't notice, we had two sixth graders write the blur, I call them blurbs, in the newsletter. And they wrote it, they, you know, we looked over, edited. But not by much, but like they nailed it the first time, which was really great. And we've just been talking about how we want our sixth graders to take ownership of our community, leaders in our community. And this is just one way that we can begin doing that. There's the hallway, I don't know.
Yes, well, the other thing about the newsletter is we're just working out a system so that eventually sixth graders are writing all of, about all the grade levels or maybe they'll highlight one. We're just trying to figure out what system makes sense.
We're going to call it the sixth grade takeover.
Right. takeover, they would highlight a grade, like a specific grade. It's probably not every week, but maybe, maybe it would get to that, but we have to start off slow.
Yeah.
And teach everyone how to use it. And then this August, when the staff came back, one of our first staff days, we reviewed expectations and all locations, like what are we expecting staff to do for ourselves? And what are we expecting students to do? And Janelle created these characters throughout the building. You might have seen them. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Right, with QR codes. So if you log into the QR code, you see a student explaining, oh, we're in the hallway. This is what is expected in the hallway. And, and you go into the dining room and there's another QR code that you, and so it's great for teaching, pre-teaching, ownership, honor, expectation.
Yeah, or comes in, they'll like, they could plug on it and know what to do. Because our sixth graders stepped up and. Made those videos.
Right, so then it's like leadership, that our sixth graders are owning this space.
You need to do that.
When you were at Studio Y with the, when they come to Studio Y, what is the connection, what might be the connection to what you're doing, but you've done so far?
So we have a good answer for this. Sure you do. Last year, I don't know if you wanted to explain it. We started with our community-based projects. We were also incorporating this engineering for elementary kids. And one of the kits was this pollinators kit. And so we kind of deconstructed it and made it back more with our brains. Yeah.
Right for our K1 group.
So we took out the, a few key pieces and then created this whole other sort of lesson and focusing on pollinators from K1. And one of the pride days, one of the most exciting days was I have a courtyard outside the library, so I'm here reading about pollinators and talking to kids. And in through the courtyard comes Buzz. And we, fully in costume, and we talked about pollinators. And Mandy and Buzz had a conversation. And then they meet Buzz again at Studio Y. Yeah, at the end, so it's like a full circle. And they did scientific experiments that day of how a pollinator always.
I wanted to say that if you didn't make the sandglass theater puppets in paradise.
I did, we have.
Did you see the, the pollinator one by any chance?
It was now, it was here.
I'm just saying, it was not your size.
Yes.
Anyway, I thought that's one, that was wonderful. So that sort of animation puppet, to me, is fantastic.
Well, and what's nice too is that the letter that the kids received is from a character they've met in kindergarten, and then they'll meet again in third grade. So it was just such a nice connection for us to bring that here. And hopefully for any spam on that and our spam. And I'm not a theatrical person, but somehow when Janelle rolls in, I could just turn it right on. No, she just turned on, let me tell you. It's great.
Thank you. What can we do as a board to support this work?
Let us do it. Yeah. We feel supported. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, let us know if you need any.
Thank you.
And one of the things I'm thinking about, the parents listening, other community members, that you throughout this experience, every kind of basic skill, subject area that comes up, it just happens to happen in the garden or someplace else. So maybe the math, the science, the lighting, the art could be great. And as you were saying, beginning of school year, just getting to know each other and figure out what the rules are. Everybody getting back.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for supporting us and thank you for learning this, despite the fact that at least I was nervous. And presenting in front of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye. Thanks for coming again.
All right, outstanding. That bit, we'll move right into finance.
That's not as. We're waiting.
You're going to come in as a dollar sign? I would. So I'm going to go in with a function listing.
For those. What happened?
Okay. Nicole has.
Nicole has.
As I've said in the past, the conversion to refinance, to, excuse me, from a finance to infinite visions, it was a substantial uplift by staff trying to get that done. Certainly wasn't like flipping and switching. Data entry intensive. And sometimes when that happens, the wrong switches within the software don't get switched. And there's some issues. On page one, and I'm looking under the encumbrance column. And I just wanted to point out to you, you'll see, I think, five lines, one, two, three, four, five, six lines down, it says 25,477. Does everybody find that okay? So what should be there is, is maybe $200,000 because it should be encumbering all of the health insurance, you know, through next June. Because what we're trying to do is to give you some idea of where we stand financially. So there's evidently, there's a switch in there that's not true. So the next time you see this, hopefully it'll have the expense. And year-to-date expense was 18,767. And it should be with the encumbrance. And that should give you some idea of what you've got as a balance. Just halfway down in the page, there's a worker comp gen ed. And I wanted to point out to you that there's an issue here. Because, does everybody find that? Should give you the number. Six, and I'm looking under the year-to-date, it says 6,424.41 cents.
In the.
It's under the year-to-date column.
It's right, yeah.
And it's incorrect. And I just want to tell you, because the worker comp is calculated from as we make payroll and spend it, we have an amount of 10 cents per hundred dollars of salary. So if you see the budget, it's 63,62. Now, and obviously, what shows as year-to-date expended was 6,424. So there's, there's something that's incorrect there. And I just wanted to point it out because we still are in the process of adjusting. Down towards the bottom of the page where the tuitions are, and again, we've not encumbered those as we, we hope we'll get encumbered in this month. You will receive from Rockingham of Tuition Bill for the middle school. So those will, will happen. I'm on page two. And there's a, the first section, at the bottom of the first section, there's something that says assessment surplus from SU. Is there really a fine that?
Yep.
That shouldn't be in there. And the reason I say that is that's what you receive in a check and should be in cash, in your cash bank account. And it's, it's nice to think you could reduce your expenditures by 292,000, but that's not the way it's done. So you will have that amount of money to act on. And it should have been put into the previous year's cash balance. See there. I'm on, I'm on page three. And I, I just will note. Guidance services, three quarters of the way down, it'll say function guidance services 2120. And if you move across, it has a deficit of 17,160. And again, don't think that's to be concerned because obviously there's, there's someone, I think it's a year person in there, but somebody at a different level. And so in comparison to what we had budgeted, we're 17,000 in the hole. Not a big deal, but I just wanted to point that out.
Why isn't that a big deal?
Well, because, because you're, you're balanced and positive in so many other areas. So, I mean, in the end, it's, it's.
No, it's a little, it's a small joke, okay.
How could we be encompassed that much while already in, already in October? Why would we spend the whole budget so early?
Well, I think of it this way, if, if you were paying $20,000 more, depending on staff and second track for the guidance counselor that you have in there now. If before there was a single policy plan for health insurance, and now there's a family. I just will say this, a family is probably a $30,000 policy. So the difference between a single ten and a family thirty, you're going to have a $20,000 deficit just with that.
But, but we also encumber the money, Charlie, now, because we're going to have that person all year long. So we know, yes, unless for some unforeseen reasons, person left, then there'd be an adjustment when the new person comes.
I'm on page four, towards the bottom. And three lines up from the bottom, which is retirement. And I just want to clarify, this says 1,509 dollars expended, and there was no budget. And I just wanted to explain that this is a piece guaranteed in finance.
Yeah, I'm going right here.
All right. So this is what we call OPEB. And OPEB stands for Other Pension Employment Benefits. And this is what, at the beginning of the year, the state of Vermont retirement system bills us for every new teacher that is entering into the retirement system. So we don't, we don't charge anybody that's already been a part and involved in the retirement system. The OPEB, once it's tagged, is forever. In other words, you will pay that 1,509, and as it goes up, every year. So, so what happens in a district? Because this is, I don't know how many years this has been, probably 10 years that they've done this additional amount. It really starts to build as a budget item in a school business. And so 10 years from now, you may pay 100 and a half in total to the retirement system for this piece that, that they're tagging for. And it stays with you forever. I mean, it'll, it'll continue as long as the person is here. Okay, page five. And I'm looking towards the, the second section, which is technology. And I'm looking at the communication line, communications technology. Does everybody find that? So you'll notice there's no budget there. The budget is zero. And four lines down, you'll see communications technology. Budget is 4,800 dollars. And obviously, that has to be fixed. Right now, they, I mean, and this is where the coding is critical. And everyone has to learn the code. And, and I just will say, what happened there? If you go over to that line, which it's a, it's a second line up in that section, there's a 21 in there. Do you see it? I'll read the line, there's 101, 106, 11. Then there's a 21, then there's a zero. So that 21 stands for special ed. And so it, it's just an account that, that will have to be deactivated. I just, so we'll, we'll fix that easily. Page six. And I'm looking at two inches down where it says legal services, other professional. And, and I just want to say, there's a function in there that says 2315. And, and there is no 2315. So that line will have to be deactivated. It should be placed two lines up where it says contracted services, legal, Westminster. So that will have to be fixed.
Jim, I just noticed that that line and the three above it and several in the space have that 21 in there, okay?
Yep, you're right.
Any special related?
No, that 21 is, is incorrectly put in there.
Could be 11.
So, I mean, there has to be 11, yes. So we will have to fix those up. And then, as I say, these probably not unexpected when you consider every digit has to be keyed in. So. Page seven. And I'm looking at the first, the second section down under salaries, facility technician. And I just wanted to point out to you, you've had a number of. Of people who have come in new. And. It's just put you over somewhat. And, and what we had encumbered and what we had budgeted. And so you're, you're around eleven thousand dollars over what you had budgeted originally. And again, I think, I, I, I don't think it's a cause for concern because I think you're up in a large number of areas.
Why, why is that? Where are we at?
Because the people you hired.
The insurance thing again?
No, but I think, but salaries as well. I mean, I think the salaries differential was there.
Is it, is that included? Is the salary, is this salary, is there insurance included in that?
No, no, no.
So, but, but ultimately, you're at a bottom line budget, right? So if a teacher left here, that was at the top of the salary scale, top of the column scale and all that stuff. And Liz found a fantastic person who was coming right out of college. There, at the bottom of all that, so, but she would have budgeted for that high end.
But we're the opposite.
Well, in this line, but, but, but what Jim's saying is, the reason why you're still okay is, at the end of the day. The bottom line of your whole budget, you're still over.
So we're saying that we hired in front of this, I'm deducing that we hired somebody who is more qualified. We're paying them more than their last salary, our last utilities person.
Your last three people last year, we budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand seven forty. And, and you're gonna, you're gonna spend more than them. So, you're gonna spend eleven thousand more.
Okay, projected. Is that cool? You like this guy? It's great, good. I think it's a guy, right?
Uh, so, on page nine, you'll see your bottom line, and again. Uh, your budget that you adopted last year was five million one forty-nine, seven thirty-one. Um, this shows. Uh, an available balance of two million four fifty-four, and obviously. That's gonna change a lot in the next month. Because with corrections on insurance, with, with having the tuitions. Uh, encumbered, it'll change. And, uh, I'm sure that, that you will still have sufficient monies available to do whatever you need. So, um, any, any questions that I can answer on the expenditure side? I'm sorry, it's a little, uh, lumpy, but, but we'll get there, and I, I do think. As I said, that this system that you have is very good, well. So, um, I just wanna a couple of comments on the revenue side.
Maybe before you go to revenue, because I do have a couple. Let me see if anyone else has questions on expenditures. So I, uh, Jim, unfortunately, was, was analyzing the object, uh, put out rather than function. Uh, kind of looking at that, and you had actually already addressed. On most of the things that I was looking at, but not entirely, so. On the. Looking at the, it's the OPB again. We're, we're back at the, sorry, back at the, I'm on page two, and I'm at the bottom of that page. The object, object, object. Printout, which you gave us, right? So it's page two of object toward the bottom. Maybe it's the same kind of thing, but it's coded that we need again, and we have sixteen thousand budgeted and we're over by thirteen. So it's at the same situation you described. And not the same numbers.
Well. You know. The problem with OPEB is. We never know the, the makeup of the teaching staff, who's going to retire, who's gonna leave. It's very, like, you know, we, we don't wanna put a hundred thousand dollars in there and say, hey, we're covered now, don't worry about it. We, we try to look at what the historical, uh, piece was, and.
So, so Cheryl, one thing I'm noting, uh, if you look just above that. Um, we've got retirement.
The OPB that you're talking about was on page four.
Well, also, we're on the object, in the back of your packet, it's a different way of looking at it.
So we're talking, I just need to know which, would you say it again? It's the object printout, and at the top, instead of saying function, it says object. We'll get there. Sorry, we're, we're at revenue. So we're in page. Thank you very much. Again.
We'll go to the second page then.
It's just that I had, you know, had them all together, and so.
At the beginning of that section, Carol, it says Retirement Teacher OPEB sixteen thousand.
Yep.
If you look at the function page, that corresponds with on page one. About. Maybe about a quarter of the way down, it's a Retirement Teacher OPEB sixteen thousand. On the, on the function page, so the number you're looking at at the bottom there. That's the sisters' OPEB sixteen thousand, twenty-nine thousand, thirteen thousand, that's a accumulation of all the lines above that.
Okay.
So the fifteen thousand that Jim was talking about is sitting in one of those other lines where you see the fifteen oh nine.
Yeah.
Okay.
He pulled out one to show you, but all of those live in that.
That helps, thank you.
And, and I will say, you can say, well. What did you guys budget sixteen thousand for? Well, last year, we expended fifteen thousand four oh eight. Seemed reasonable, but obviously, it wasn't enough to, to cover some of the. Some of the newer staff, newer people.
So I've got two other really small questions, I don't think it'll take too much time. On page seven of the object report, so stay in the object. And it's two-thirds of the way down, that refers to school board supplies and advertising. I'm guessing maybe, well, advertising position. Maybe it's a bit. I'm wondering what was attributed to the school board. It's not a lot of money, I just.
No, the only thing I can say is that if there's advertising sometime. School boards around voting time will advertise, do some advertising or, or try to.
But, could, could also have to do with your RFPs.
That's what I was.
Yeah, so, so we have, when we post met papers. You know, the paper, that's other, that's all, the papers are making up all their, their revenue these days, so it costs, I don't know.
Average is about two fifty, depending on how we work, done nine hours of work. Is it, we had the solar posted, and we had our. Okay, that's great. And then one last one, and it's on page eight of, um, Jim. And I'm looking at Pecan Oil, and I think that we've got something attributed to the West. Because we don't spend twenty-five thousand dollars a year to.
No, no.
Well, actually, it's more expensive. Was there more oil at the last, that we did there, because we use workshop here.
Might, might be, it might be five, twenty-five, you might have twenty-five here.
Can you double check that? It's very high.
No, I, I agree. Yes, I mean, I, I would have assumed that the five thousand would have been less.
That is my guess. Yeah, it was just, it's only that there is a line, heating wood chips Westminster for twenty-one thousand. That's, yeah, I, I, I understand that, but when you, I'm just talking about this, talking about wood chips, this is expensive, but it may be that.
Last year in total, we spent twenty-four thousand for wood chips, oil, both places, so.
When our wood chip burner is up and running, we spend about five hundred dollars. I don't know, I.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that, it's a good call.
Yeah, but actually, it's great spending twenty-five thousand, which I've never seen before, but analysis of the cost of the West. Um, I'd be, so we need to know.
I agree, yep.
All right, that's, those are my questions, now you wanna go to revenue?
Revenue, I, the only thing I wanted to say is, your revenue sheet does not show. What you encumbered for the surplus to reduce taxes of three hundred thousand. I mentioned that in the last one. I, I think the, uh. Some of the state monies have come in, some of the tax monies have come in, and, uh. I guess I don't see any issues at all on the revenue side. Think it's doing well. I have another sheet, which is the object sheet, one page. At this, hopefully you all have a copy of that.
On the very back, Carol.
Maybe do you have a copy?
This should be on the very last page. Yeah, it's the one.
Okay, yeah. So. This far right column, which says Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, always like. Really correct, because this is, um. This is really what, um, is the projected. Balance that you're gonna end up with. Now, I will say that. Obviously, we've, we've changed the principal and interest. And a couple of other line items which, uh, may not come in, but. I guess I'm saying right now, it looks like we could have a hundred and a half easily for balance. Now. This is a start of where we will start. And move health insurance by some percentage. We will move staff up a step. And wherever on the track they go. And we'll start to, uh, give you some clear indications of where the increase will look. This is, this is just a, a, something that will show you as a projection, where you're gonna end up.
What's, what's line thirty-seven, allocation of SU assessments?
So, the SU. Is about a five million dollar operation after, after revenues. And it's split up based on students. And so there's an assessment that is given to you based on the number of students that you have within the district. That's the percentage that you, that you pick up. We're still way too early to talk about assessments at this time, but.
It's, uh, or percentage, things like the student's office, the lessons, I mean, the food service, I mean. And, you know, but this is great, I'm happy, question matters, and I hope it's all, I did.
And, and there's, there's some, there're funky formulas. I say funky, just they're based on, as Jim said, as you know, like percentage of enrollment and whatnot. You know, preschool and. Special ed transportation.
At, at least, and I just wanna say, those formulas are now live and active. And you see that nineteen, one thirty-five, that's because the formula pushed that out because. Uh, some of the, some of the lines, the account lines have changed. And it just automatically adjusts. The only thing that doesn't adjust is, I don't know what the October enrollment is, so. That's, um, still the number. So you need times.
Can you, why do you estimate that the salaries are gonna go down in the twenty-five year?
No, I don't, I don't, it's gonna go off generally. This, the only thing this does, that seventy-eight, eight sixty-two.
I'm looking at line fourteen.
Line fourteen, oh, okay, yep, seventy-eight, eight oh eight is, is down, that's what they're down by in total. And it's, it's just where you're at now.
If you project, they'll be down in twenty, twenty-five?
Column E is not a projection of where we think next year is gonna come in.
Right, right.
It's mis-titled.
Yes. It's, it's really twenty-four projected.
So, so if you, if you read across, you have, you have FY twenty-three, actually what we expended. So on line three, we expended one million, uh, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. And then what you all approved for FY twenty-four was one point two million. And right now, we are projecting that you will spend one point one million.
Right.
Of, of that line item. And so, once we, you know, as Jim likes to say, throw a dart, dartboard to try and figure out what. Percentage increases might be and whatnot, we can then give you a number of where you might be next year. A little mistake.
Any other questions for Jim right now?
Stay, uh, through the presses for, for, because the first two items of the new movements would be helpful.
Yeah, we currently have a hundred and forty-four students enrolled at the UCF. Our average daily attendance is about ninety-five percent. As you know, can't keep waiting, our sixth graders are there this week, it has been a wonderful week for this group of people, now we have been. One specifically, I, I, I shouldn't say again. This Friday is our first coffee conversation, so this is an opportunity for caregivers to come in the morning and have a coffee and ask some questions. Have a chat. It's really important. Will it be having an evacuation drill this month? Um, we have a safety drill every month, this monthly is evacuation. We'll also have, um. Individual classes, practice walking to every location site. Our early release is coming up, which will be October nineteenth. Staff will meet in professional learning communities and review recent DIBELS data. And then as a staff, we'll engage in professional development series on explicit instruction. This will be our structure for each half-day moving forward, staff will meet in PLTs, and then we'll engage in a whole staff. This work is led by both our instructional leadership team and our professional learning community leadership team. So, um, this week, we did our map testing, the measurement of the academic progress. First students in grades one through five, they'll take it now, and then they'll take it in spring. Kindergarteners will be assessed for that in the winter, and then again, right. Our sixth graders took the assessment last week, and scores will be shared at church to conferences. Along with, and DIBELS information, or any other. Like Mandy and Janelle mentioned, we'll be having our annual farm and field day, October thirty-first. This is a Tuesday, and this day that highlights our nature-based learning opportunities along with a time to be outside together as a school. So the students will participate in a variety of academic activities throughout the morning, different stations outside. We have a horse drawn carriage, sack races, obstacle course. And then we also have, um, communities that bringing their vehicles, so we have like a truck. Situation happening out in the parking lot, which is a lot of fun, and then in the afternoon, we'll have our Halloween break. So we'll start here at one thirty, we walk in the current hat and band, go down School Street, take a left onto. Five, turn around at Town Hall and my back, so. Community is definitely hushed, come and cheer on our students. Any questions?
I, I might have asked before, I forget, but ninety-five or ninety-four set attendance seemed pretty good. There was, there was, at the times, not long ago, about national levels being appalling, you know, it was sixty cents. So does that mean that the, maybe the high school, you know, we're out there, or is the high school attendance way low, and we'll bring the whole district down?
I, I'm not prepared to be able to speak on the high school, so I didn't know you were gonna ask that question, Charlie, so, um. But ninety-five percent attendance at elementary school is, is very good.
It's, it's, it's an average, it's not the norm.
I mean, just from my own experience, like, we, we would, you know, ninety-two, ninety, ninety-two, I mean. Uh, so ninety-five is good, that's a good indicator that your, your students wanna be here, and, uh. I think from the overall district, again, I just don't have those numbers, wouldn't wanna throw a number out, um. But, um, if you're looking at the overall, your high school attendance rate, and yes, they, they'll. But um if you're looking at the overall, your high school attendance rate, and yes, they, they'll, they'll be in anger.
Anyway, but we'll say my point is wow, that's.
The testing that happens now, we're just trying to like see where we are, and then the testing. How many times did the testing happen?
The math stuff is twice a year, so it'll be in the fall and in the spring to look at.
How it's growing.
Yes.
Can we get a update? Like we did last year from um, yeah.
Yes, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
In the spring or even in, I mean.
But now it doesn't compare to any.
It doesn't show growth.
Yes.
Yeah, and we have a lot of great, we had our math coach, our new district math coach in the building today. So looking at both math and we posted a program through the SU forefront, had a math assessment.
Yeah.
And so we were looking at individual, that's like the more exciting work. Math is great, but it doesn't really give us um instructional moves. I mean, it does, but it's a little bit less useful than the other assessments we have that we really use uh to inform our instruction. So we worked with Lily DiPino, who was our new math coach here um at the SU. And she met with grade levels in our math interventionist, Dina White, supplement two. Okay, this is where the kids fell in our forefront, how do we wanna? Because every class has an intervention block built in, both in ELA and in math. So how do we wanna use that intervention block? How, Dina, how are we gonna reach our struggling students and our excellent students? So how are we gonna reach them all? And that's what we did today to plan for. Usually, the first six weeks is really build in community routines, practices, and affect thing. Um, so at this point, we're ready to unroll the intervention block.
Oh, you can, me, we, we can, she can update us.
Yeah.
So, well, I, I was trying to dig for it really fast and I find I can't find my, goes, I got two emails. Um, there is a schedule that Devon put together, when she's going to come to boards. So that you'll have an anticipated time, because there will be a time in the fall that we will, she will be coming and sharing the VT cap.
Oh, gosh.
That's the state assessment.
From last year.
From last spring. And um, and, and just giving some updates. So, so MAPS or NWEA, which is the Northwest Educational Association. That is our local assessment that we were required to give from the state, but, but we have to have a local assessment. It's how we measure um our student progress and it has a good correlation back to the state assessment, um except the VTCAP is so new, I can't tell you, it doesn't, and then um. So it kind of predicts a little bit, but we like, the, the reason we like MAPS is because we provide it, we give it twice so we can see and measure.
Yeah.
If it, the DIBELS is something we've been introducing um last, last year was the first time we introduced.
Six, so I believe it's day eight, I wanna say, but I might be wrong, but I know everyone here.
So last year, I think it was day four, and then, so we expanded, I think day six, and then um. And then, in fact, Devon was just showing me the uh forefront today.
Yeah.
Once we fully understand it, and I'm, I'm gonna use it that way, the, the power, we pulled up one child. And if, you know, we always have the colors, you know, green, yellow, orange, red, right? Reds are bad, greens are good, and all that stuff. So you looked at a student and we're looking at their reading and see it's yellow and you're like, oh, man, what's going on with that kid? And when you went in a little further circle and, and drilled down, you can actually figure out exactly what was holding that kid back right now. And so, once we fully understand it, a teacher can go in and we can target that, so either an interventionist or a teacher can help target that, we can reassess. It's that one little area that we're pulling the kid down, all the other areas are, are good, so.
Yeah, and within forefront, there is a place to um for the teacher to get ideas for next steps for the student. And that's for how they score, either if they score in red, the yellow, the green, or the blue.
We want, we want our greens, we want to push it green, yeah.
Do next, no matter what their level is, which is really interesting. And um we are piloting a new math curriculum, and Lester mathematics, which is an open resource. And on that in that resource on web site, you can access many different grade levels. So if you're teaching a concept like fractions, you, and you have a student who needs, like, say you teach third grade, you're teaching fractions. And you're doing this one game in fractions, you can see how you can take that down to second or first grade. But you also can see how you can drop that to their fourth or fifth grade using the same game. So that was really exciting and so user friendly, so um teachers ready to play in this game.
That's really good, that was awesome. All really exciting parts. One, two quick things, you know, Andy, when we had the SU meeting with all boards last spring and Kate Kane came in and presented with Deb. It was, we're using DIBELS and it was that kind of analysis you're speaking to, it was really exciting about being able to see. In that case, it might have been fun, or something like that. So this, we're, we're improving by being able to get the substantial diagnostic.
Yes, and, and one of the things that I got so many fronts um that we use, different things, it's forefront.
Yeah.
Okay, so forefront helps push the information to panorama. Panoramas are big clearinghouse where behold student attendance, student discipline, and student academic progress. You can correlate those together. So it helps you do some informed decision making there. And not everything wants to talk to panorama, or, you know, they don't all play in the sandbox together. And forefront becomes um that bridge that helps us push in that information. It provides other information, but we, it allows us to push it all up into panorama. Yeah, so like DIBELS doesn't like, because there's proprietary things, and so DIBELS doesn't go into panorama real well. And so forefront helps us, that's one of the reasons we want.
So we'll all be looking at that.
Yes, so then you can go, so a big global level, we can look at panorama with that teacher, you can get right into forefront, get that instructional material, that's the um, the piece that we're liking.
Give us a question, I know what that's, you're exactly gonna ask. Are any other questions? So the next item, new business, is to actually have a motion on the floor to formally put in the record, something that's already been done. And, and that has to do with the twenty nineteen capital reserve monies when we were a part of the WNVSD. The, the monies that were surplus from twenty nineteen have already been approved by the voters. But we found kind of in record keeping, it's not something that the business office can see quickly. That they still have money they'd be charging against, it maybe isn't top of mind. Uh, and so it was recommended that we have a motion that would, that would do that for us. And I wonder, um, Charlie, if you might take a look at this and see if you can read that.
So the post, the post of this, move two thousand and nineteen surplus fund, but move that. The two thousand and nineteen surplus funds we spent as previously approved by the voters in an amount of two, twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty nine. Capital under group which under the test, and then, and an amount up to eighty five thousand, eight hundred and sixty. Who's student tuition? I read that again? Did we, did we read it again? Okay, well, well, I mean, okay. I moved that two thousand and nineteen surplus fund we spent as previously approved by the voters in an amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty nine capital under and, and an amount of eighty five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars for student tuition.
Okay, so that was the motion on the floor, any respect, the pressure down in the knowledge? Any, any question? Right, uh, all of those in favor? Hi? Okay, yes. So, uh, what I'm gonna give you, the call for the record, is a, a copy of when this was first approved by the voters in two thousand and twenty twenty. And then when we again formally distributed the money, that being, you know, elementary school district, and a portion of them to draft an app over here. This thing we got that is back to, to. And, and just as an anecdote, this came up when I saw, looking at the warrants and saw a notation that this would be somebody, a repair uh would be charged against reserve fund, and I said, which reserve? And wanna be sure that we spend out the older ones before we spend these new ones that we have. So thank you for that. And then on the budget planning process, uh, just as a point of information from the folks. We know that the town of Westminster requires a budget figure from us far earlier than any of the other towns. And so they really want us to have everything in our town report by the middle of December. They want us to have a final budget in all our events by the middle of December. We have persuaded them to let us wait until January. But they really, really, really don't wanna far past the middle of January. So I've looked at um the schedule and what we need to do, you know. Keep in mind that for us in Westminster, if we're planning our budget, we have to know the SU budget. We have to know it was assessed, but so. A budget uh final. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, you know, about that. And I think the date that Westminster should be taking the main articles uh to the town of Westminster should be on Friday, January twelve. Wait, I said that one more time, sorry. On Friday, January twelve, we need to have everything done and approved. And, and I think, you know, if we can get some conversation with Andy and the SU board. I'd really like to see the SU approve of that people's December. And that will, that plus to keep on schedule with all the.
I, I will also, yes, we, we, we're, we're trying to work towards that, that's, that, that is our, our duty. But you could also, uh, and I talked, I just talked to Val at the school today, I think it's we gotta work in parallel to meet these timelines, because, you know, you don't wanna wait. I don't want Liz to wait until after the SU is done to start her, her piece, so, so. I think we're, we're gonna be starting to work, well, there was some misunderstanding across the whole SU, uh, people traditionally waited until the um, right, and, and because this is so accelerated, we definitely want to be working in tandem. Um, and, and be able to bring that, so. I, we we've been working hard today, well, you know, pretty much all of today, we've been budgeted, and so we're, we are we anticipated a December date, so.
And, and then for us, you know, as a board, um, and Liz, we need to start a budget now.
Yeah.
You know, and with these new tools that Jim has provided to, we're gonna get increasingly accurate and, and filled out like traditions.
Right.
All of that, and maybe you could, you can start, you can start out something for now. And I think for us, we'll really be looking at um you know, then, or end of December, but it's special, December, really December.
I, I think, yeah, I think early December will be a busy time.
Yeah. Okay, and that's all I wanna hear, beautiful, we, we kind of co-think, any, any other comments from you about the process?
Thank you for clarifying that.
We're doing this together, right? That's um, you know, the, yeah, a lot of them, you know, it's about how we document, so maybe it needs here for people to get that stuff remaining. So, thank you so much.
Sure, I could back up, I was able to locate, uh, Devon's um looking at uh November second. That's a date to come from the uh data to you all.
Great. Those are the next meeting.
That's, yeah, your next regular meeting, and then June sixth would be uh, once we had the spring data back and had a chance to look at it, so those are the two proposed dates. That's good. Good.
Uh, I actually, when, when we get to the date and time of the next meeting, and I was actually even supposed to be only once in November, I'm actually on channel the second. Uh, and wondered if we can have our one meeting included budget for on November sixteen. So.
I don't think that, I, I just grabbed that, now you said that, I remember you just telling me that you did have another engagement, so. Uh, so we're talking November sixteen.
My, my proposal to everybody is that this board meets only once in November, and with that date, you know, November sixteen. But, no. So it's before Thanksgiving, yeah, it's not quite as early as the other one.
I thought we were gonna meet on Thanksgiving.
Yeah, right.
But it was gonna cut for us.
So we can affirm that again.
Yeah.
Time, yeah. So now we have all this old and unfinished business, but I figured you're gonna bring us some new information of a long category. Me, or anything on the roof chest from last Friday? Having to do with solar? You were inspected, right? Do you have anything, Andy?
I have not seen anything back from uh Steve, I'm gonna just double check, I've gotten, like I said lots of emails these days.
Oh, classic.
Um, Steve.
Why do you look for that? Let's, let's raise, you know, okay, go ahead, Charlie, you raised a question, we got an answer.
Yeah, so I, I, I raised the question with um you know, I thought, I observed that five percent inclination, five degree, it's nowhere near ideal for some panels. And what would be, clearly would be extra cost in elevating them to an angle that's more suitable for this statue. And so I just asked, has the, has the math been done? What would be the pros and cons of doing so? The answer came back that um, there was a caveat there. It was a couple of caveats, based on what we were told about the roof strength, so clearly there may be new information that they uh, based on what they knew previously, they didn't think that we could have elevated um or tilt uh, where you go panels because of the wind shear that might get, it might be extra stress on the roof. Now, I'm not sure if they were thinking it would be downward stress or upward stress, but that would be, it seems never. But perhaps as they were mentioning about the strength of the roof, if they confirm what they just said, or may contradict it, and so, but it is, it's certainly clear, all of the data suggests that about a twenty degree or somewhere between twenty and thirty degree tilt from the panels would greatly increase the efficiency of the electricity production. And if that were possible, I was suggesting it might be worth spending a bit more money upfront. Obviously, it would cost more, but how much more? Not necessarily straight the roof, but to, to, to buy the actual, if the roof was strong enough.
Right.
To buy the gear that you need to make the tilt, but it's flat. Instead of there's some brackets or whatever. And there might be a little shading, so, you know, there is that, it's not, it's not an easy calculation. But I imagine that there are computer programs to do this for you. But uh, there was an example in an article I read of uh marrying Nevada and Oregon, and in the case of Oregon, which is about the same size, just over Oregon. But a twenty, between twenty and thirty percent tilt, there was a between fifteen and eighteen percent increase in, in production. Particularly in the winter, if you have five percent, five degrees in the winter, you're getting pretty much nothing. Um, which may not matter, it may be well compensated for the summer, but I think if these things are gonna last thirty years, a ten, twenty percent increase in productivity, it's good for increase, uh, oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's cash for back. Um, and so we're, what was the actual cost? And what is the feasibility of tilting?
It also maybe brings up is it possibly better to ground out some instead of having some?
Or, or will they?
They talked about that, actually, in the presentation. Now, whether that was feasible or not to be able to do that. But, I'm not saying that we shouldn't go and ask the question for sure.
Well, one thing, we know that the, the bid we did not accept was specifically higher. So, well, of course, one is why? Did they factor in some kind of, that goes into something, or I didn't look at that one very carefully. So maybe we have information already about why one was so much uh higher than the other. So I know we've accepted that bid, but I feel like we should look back and say, well, what have we missed?
So I'm looking at an email from Steve from October four.
Yeah.
Um, right, and he just talked about the limitations on roof structure loads and that we currently don't have an option for a higher pitched racking system that will involve less engineering labor or racking costs that has been proposed.
We don't have an option?
That's what he said, that, that's his analysis, we do not currently have an option for a higher pitched racking system.
But, 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 within, within current budget. So against the budget, it's possible, that is possible with an increase. It's possible that is possible with an increase.
So a couple of things. Um, I got another, in addition to that email, which I shared with you, and that came from Southern of us. So. They also wanted us to be clear. Any question is great. They're happy to respond to all of these. They really want us to understand. The options so we can continue this. Right now, we're waiting for the structural analysis on the roof again.
Got the invoice for it, but I don't have the.
Oh, fine.
I don't have the, that's all. Look, I I don't have a an answer on it. So I will. I'll reach out to Steve tonight. If I get an answer, I'll kind of set along.
Now, we have to then figure out, do we, do we, with the new roof, which is recommended because we have a twenty year old roof on the chair. We disagree what we need to do to get it to where it needs to be and be. And be strengthened sufficiently to improve the angle, which is what you're asking.
Yeah, that's the right drive.
That's the right question. This is not about solar. I have a question for you. It's not about solar. Can we finish the solar?
Yeah. Well, you know, so I just don't want to leave it. The possible actions that you need, you need, you need people. So. Ian is not here. So I'm just trying to figure out if the possible actions require. Vote.
Okay.
As opposed to.
Is that right?
I just need, I have enough in the email.
Exactly. Sorry about that, but thank you. So I think, you know, this, the solar installation of the roof for the next two items. Uh, and we've just heard those. Waiting for more information. Pavilion is next. Do you have any news on that?
No.
Okay. It was not a fine film. So so with the lack of additional information from the one person that submitted a bid for us. I was anticipating that that might be because we didn't have additional information. So. I went ahead and sent out to you all a revised. Request for proposals. And I would just point out that we can take action on releasing this, having Nicole warn it again. This circulated to people and maybe some people that fire. I would point out to use some changes to make sure they're comfortable with it. Um, I. I'm the one who would quantify it. I'm looking for a possible octagonal. Um, in a pavilion. And so this is just really for more standard pavilion. I did still leave in cost comparisons for several sizes. I'd love to know what the differences might be down. And so it still leaves some ambiguity for bidders, but at least they are probably going to come in and stretch handles. Uh, and I added the concrete slab. Um, and that's, yeah, and then changed the date. So if it's released today or tomorrow, uh, then I ask for proposals on November ten. So they could be reviewed before our that. November sixteenth meeting. So I'd entertain a motion then to send out a new request for proposals.
You're sure.
I shall move. Second.
Alright. I moved and said that we send out a new request for proposals to pavilion at the Westminster Center. Proposals to be due on. Who had you tell, given them.
They're going to Liz. They're going to Liz.
They are. They did last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So all those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? You've got it, right? Yeah, so again, we can, we can send as well. Thank you. And I want to. And still the security of this. Anything for new man?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull this up actually, because we, I want you all to be able to see it. Okay.
Well, we're, it's bringing, I got an email. I was supposed, I set my code. And then I got an email giving me another code. To get into the building. So I'm just curious. I'm trying to. I made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He sent you a code?
I was asked for a code. I gave a code. And then I got an email back asking me to use a little, another code.
Oh, okay.
Temporarily.
Oh.
So I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, um, I think there was our code system that you created codes in was down for a bit.
So they probably assuming that I'd used.
Yeah.
It was about a few years.
Oh, did you ask for that?
I was asked for a code.
He asked you?
I was, I had, I I should go back and talk to you. I was asked for a code. I submitted a code. Then I got an email back suggesting that I guess another code. Maybe he thinks. I'll find it, Liz, and I'll. So it was this little buckle thingy.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense.
It doesn't, no. Alright, wasn't asking for my social security.
Yeah, right.
I tried to, it's here. I want to see it.
I'm sorry. There's another room. Matt. Now, as a question, if you turn this off. Will I be able to use a Wi-Fi anyway?
If I turn it off.
If if when you close this down.
Yes. Yes.
There's a Wi-Fi.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for being.
So this is a proposal for the new security entrance here. So. Get up. I think it'll be easier. I know people in line won't be able to see it, but. So. Currently. This area. Right here where it says vestibule. This currently is an open area. Right up front here. So this is currently Liz's office, the outer office, where the secretary is. And then back in here is. Where Liz's office is. So that hallway that goes to Liz's office. They kind of orient you. Does that make sense?
Where's the street? Where's the outside?
It's down here. So the, the oval right out here. It's down here. For the flight hall. And so we're currently, so here's the entrance. My office.
So this is the front door here right now. And if you go in, this is Bridget's office here, and this is my office, and there's the bathroom, the bathroom, the doll bathroom.
Ram up the gym. Thank you. Pardon me. Okay. So what we are, what what the architect proposed and worked with Liz quite extensively on is the first thing is flipping the nurse's office and the main office. They would flip on both sides of that entrance. And then what we would do is create. Uh, an area outer. On that vestibule that's currently overhanged, that's just not and covering. And so this would create an internal vestibule. So if you would have here. These doors would be locked and there would be a keyless entry. So you'd have a card to get in. Um, each of you have a card to get in. You come into this area. And there would be a window here, a transaction window. Uh, where the school secretary would be able to have a conversation with the person, but these doors would also be locked. So that a person couldn't get in rated building. So currently, once a person's been buzzed in. They actually have full access to your building. So this creates an opportunity to. Pull the person in there to make sure it's a person who can fly into our building. And then to have someone come and actually escort someone around. So we're starting to walk around our building. Um, in doing this. The idea was that we capture some area that already exists and are not going to tear down a bunch of walls. Because that's where your costs are going to go up. Uh, but this area right here. Which is currently the outer part of the nurse's office. Would become Liz's office. Um, and the principal's office. And this will be the new secretary's office. It'll be popular with built-ins. Again, there would be a pass through a pocket door. There would be a pass through that office space. And we talked about trying to get some natural lighting in there. So there's some. Higher windows. I think they're shorter, but they're up higher to provide natural light coming into this office space like there. Um, and then. I, I don't think people are looting the space. I think, I think it's actually a pretty equal swath of space.
Yeah, I mean, my, yeah.
This is a cinder block wall. This is part of the problem of the flipping. So this cinder block wall and cutting into it is creating some of the pieces. This also exists because there's a window here. It gives a line of sight as people are coming up to the door, whereas here there was not that many of sight.
I think the inner shop is a bit larger. And it will have, yeah, it has a bathroom now. But yes, we'll have an additional bathroom.
Right. Yeah, because I think the original fraud, it didn't have this bathroom. When we said, no, no, it can be down and they, they added it in. Um, it gives a little bit of a conference room. That is Liz's office now. Be used as a conference room. So that's kind of the overshot of it. We're looking, see, anything that's dark is new construction. So these, these walls would would be enhanced. Uh, this wall here would be, we'd actually, we're trying to see if we could, this is the alarm panel that currently is exposed if you come in. Through the main entrance. You see, it's all red and something like that. We're trying to see if we can actually have that. You close like in a cabinet. It's not always exposed, but, but have to have access to it for fire.
And does it look like there's a little overhang outside? That, what am I seeing? This, this square coming out like the past.
Yeah, that's the exterior roof line you're talking about. So right here.
To your left.
Yeah, that says exterior roof line, new canopy. So you're gonna, so this will, this, this dotted line, it will come out further.
Yeah.
That roof line will come out so that as you walk up, you're not standing in the rain waiting for the door to open. So.
What are the light ratio areas?
Here?
Big around Bridget's new office.
This, this right here?
The light is thick like.
These? This?
In, in one more. This, they're right there.
Yeah. So these are all built-ins. And cabinetry. So the dotted line means you've got an, you've got upper cabinets. And then that's all desk space, because you're, you're looking down. Um, and so what we talked about was. This would have the abilities that she would have, you know, the ability to move. Wherever her, you know, this is a new base cabinets and countertops, which is all this. So it would be over. Considerably more counter space than what she currently has. So.
I got. How do you feel about the amount of light? You don't have any exterior windows. I'm not in my office all that much, you know, and. So I'm fine with that. I'd much rather. Bridget had this space where she had and her nurses to have the space, the free space. So I'm totally, really excited.
Because like you could do a skylight in here. We could try it out, you know, what if there's not enough natural light?
Yeah.
I just know that's so important. Having interior offices is like a little.
Yeah.
I, I know everyone I've talked to. Really. Doesn't really promote the skylights because they. If you just spend a lot of money putting the brand new roof on, if we cut a hole in that, that's going to, it's going to be a. Because you see that, this is why I pulled that. So this is, that would be, that's a elevation of your entrance. Okay. Well, so that whole area, this whole area right here. This whole area right here. Above all of this is empty space above your, so here's your ceiling.
Yeah, yeah.
This is all empty space. We had to insulate that.
Right.
Because it hadn't been insulated in the past and it had to do with wood line. But this gives you an idea. So. So here's, you're gonna have this overhang that's gonna come out. And if you have the windows and you have, this is that outer door. So this doesn't currently exist. So this, this would be a new pushout to come flush with this exterior brick.
Um, Bridget currently has a counter that separates her from anybody coming in the door. I would like that. She's definitely like, she's been having one of them. You know, walk in and see her back. She's looking out the window.
No, my, my understanding is. To show you, like, I would imagine. She would have, like, this would be her main desk with her computers being somewhere around here. So she's able to.
Yeah, if you walk into her room, walking behind her. How do you get into her room?
So you go in here. You go, you get buzzed in and you go in here.
But then she.
So she sees me, the person right here. And then they get buzzed in. And they have, I mean. Can't imagine having to go into her office over a bus into the building. I could imagine staff going in there.
The, the biggest issue we had here in this building is the secretary did not, or the admin of this did not have direct line of sight of someone coming up to. You're coming, approaching your building. But then also as that person was at the door, they did not have direct sight.
Or they would come in. I mean, the biggest problem now is they come in.
Well, so you, so you didn't have direct sight. So she had a camera that was showing her who was at the door. So that was the second one. So you don't have, you can't see the people approaching. Can't see the people directly who's standing in front of you. So you're only looking at video. And then the third one is, once that person's buzzed in. They're in. And you don't have that ability to. You know, someone could be like. Again, hypotheticals, right? Yeah. Like, no, but I mean, you know, it's like, oh, everyone's in a good mood, but you can't really tell that. And then someone did, and then you might be chasing that person down a hallway. So. So. Again, just some more drawings. And so. It's not, a lot of it was just, this is all kind of the engineering drawings that we asked just to have. But here's a. These would be, these are elevations, just of what you would be looking at. So this is a reception area. This would be the door into her office. That is that pass through window that we were just talking. So you're in her office looking out that window. This would be in the office looking out those two windows with the cabinetry in the, in the base. Uh, so we're looking at building uppers and lower cabinets, all built in. In the nurse's office, again, same type of stuff of built-in cabinets. Uh, we had a lot of discussion around like making sure that there was space for refrigerators, space for ice makers, you know, it's all ADA compliance and, you know, so that's, that's some of the niceties here is. When you, when you do these upgrades, we have to bring in everything up into code. Uh, we went so far, we had conversations about. Flooring and. What type of flooring? And there are certain types of floors that are, look like carpet and everything, and you can mop everything up, but. We, we had a discussion about that in a nurse's office, if you want linoleum type of product and stuff like that. So. You know. The, the architect was not able to give us like a, like a rendering, like a colored rendering, because it was such a quick turnaround, which is, but we wanted to do that.
And I asked a question of that. I mean, there are kids that are going to be coming into the nursing homes.
Yeah.
So I'm into the carpet. I'm just saying, you know, to make it welcoming, to figure out how to make it. Correct, basically.
There were issues around. Yeah.
There are certain things that you can put up.
There was, no, there was, we had this. We had this discussion. There would be another product we'd have to actually purchase that would allow us to do the cleanup on this type of service.
Nice.
So, so there were some.
Conversation.
Yeah, there was, there was, I, there was, you know, like trying to figure out exactly what it is. And, you know, we were, you know. You know, I told, I told Liz, we couldn't go with the mahogany Brazilian wall, walnut and the granite barbed cops, but.
All we ask is that the flooring is not adhered with PCB laden.
Yeah, nasty. That's all we ask. Charlie's got a question.
Yeah, this, it's obviously much more comprehensive and beautiful than I imagined. So is the budget work? They're coming more expensive than we imagined?
No, this is still on budget.
And this is from Esser Moneys.
This would be Esser Funds. I think. I don't have the exact proposed timeline of when this would be, but Steve did not seem to think it was going to be like a major disruption. It'd be something we might even be able to do over a break.
Really?
Might, or maybe he was in the summer with you.
I think it was spring, summer.
I got all these other projects going.
Oh, I know. By the time we went out to bid, by the time we, you know, all the steps that we needed to do. My, I was thinking this was happening in the spring. So maybe summer.
Saxon River is an easier one. So it's like Saxon River is like, we're trying to do over the holiday break, the new year holiday. Yeah, that's, it's a much easier switch. So, so what? So so what we're actually looking for from you all tonight is um if we can move ahead with these plans, because we do have to go out the bid before um contractors. I also need a motion for you all uh authorize NSCU's funds to do all of this. You might have done it all again earlier, but I think it just make it clean if we can get another authorization to uh expend uh Esser Funds in your building, and the reason for that, it's federal funds. I feel like a doctor right now, the floor is closed, you know, things happen. Um so it's, they are federal funds, and so um there is the very, you know, slim likelihood the federal government, if you were to sell this bu- building at some point in time, it would be fair to say we want our money back that we invested in your building, so. You know, that's why I say, really, it's not good, but you know, I'm talking about going into surgery, you know, type of thing, so, but um you know, for full disclosure, that is why we need permission from you all of this kind of funds.
You need an up to amount or anything like that?
Uh I I think if we had not to see uh
If I don't need it, that's fine.
Yeah, I I I think I think if we could just have the the um, because I think it is an earlier one, but just a another one to go ahead and move that, that would be helpful.
One quick question before we do that. Are you fully, you fully love this, fully satisfied with this?
Yeah.
It and also, we had conversations about moving the main office back over here.
Where it was.
Remember it was that one time over here, and when the architect first came, she was really excited about that area and everything, and then after conversations with Liz and her, and they like understanding how the building operates and breathes and functions, became that's in this.
Nurse that is.
Oh, yeah, okay, definitely, yeah, they've been definitely involved in the conversations, Bridget, that.
Right, and we need a motion.
I need two motions. So just, I really need one motion to allow us to go out for um bid uh to begin, you know, the bidding process for for the construction, and then the other one is to expend the funds.
Well, I move that we expend the Esser Funds that are needed for this.
If you're not, I'm sorry, if I could help, uh we're we're looking for authorization to to spend Esser Funds to enhance your main entrance.
Okay, what Andy said, uh in my words. Spend the funds, but that's the first motion I'm. Right, any other discussion on that? All in favor? Well, I give you a post. And then the second motion.
That looks like that we authorize the super ten to uh put out a bid for, or put out a whatever.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
The most. Unanimous in vote cases. Fantastic. Uh the last item um on your agenda for tonight is something we've talked about a little bit, the whole notion of important vision rules and values, and let me just point out the documents, let's not get into the big discussion now, we get all the time, but we'll come back to it at another meeting. But what I sent to you this afternoon was mission, vision, and guiding beliefs that are literally on the W N P issue website. And these have actually been the mission, vision, and guiding beliefs for a really long time. Uh they were reaffirmed when I first came on the Western Conference. Um they were discussed extensively in twenty fifteen, as an example. So I think it's time for us to look at them again, we can easily reaffirm them at some point, but I think it's a good time for us to read them and see if we think there's anything missing, but what has been missing are literally any goals. And Liz, this also leads to the fact that we, you have some with the staff here, some guiding documents, some values, some principles. And I think they should all be integrated, so if you could look at this and kind of help us with what's missing, yeah. From what the the leadership team here and all of you have done, and then specifically to these roles, I just grabbed them based on things we've discussed. But I'd like you all to uh make your own comments on them, and we'll come back to uh discussion at a later meeting. I thought they were fantastic. I didn't know, no, seriously, I didn't know that this, I don't know if I've ever overlooked it or whatever, but I I thought um that it was about both, you know, children, you know, children's growth as well, you know, intellectually, emotionally, physically. You know, and um I I just uh that's what I wanted to say, so. I, and I thought that the goals, we can have a conversation about them, but um I thought that they were consistent to me with the mission and vision and guiding beliefs of my, but I looked over and read them and. And Andy, would you make a comment, please, about the value goals for you from the superintendent's perspective?
Sure, thank you, I I think for for me, and I think for my whole team, but the goals help direct the decisions that we're gonna make, and so if we if we advise on on budgets, if we also look to um different initiatives that we have, we want our, we want those initiatives to be aligned with the goals. And that we're not just creating new things, because I think teachers have a lot on their plates, and Liz has a lot on her plate, and um and so when, you know, someone comes in and says, you know, we want to build a rocket ship. I mean, we can come back to these goals and say, okay, does it fit into these goals somewhere, right? That would, that's a bad example, maybe, but it'd be experimentally, but uh but uh but that that idea, so that we don't just start doing something new, and I know Liz is never going to leave. But we do know that there there are times that there are changes in leadership, there are changes in in um in um teachers and whatnot, and so goals help that continuation through changes um in personnel, so.
So if you would then, Liz, take them to the staff here and have them go to see what might be missing, and get anything. And then um we might think about a public facing process, uh and the board as well, we, the board might want to send it out to the public.
Sure, yeah.
Survey devices, we might even want to have a meeting, but at minimum, I think it started with uh a need to revisit it, and then to look at these goals, so that it's clear some of our values, including that the bit that's renewable energy, which is reflected in this, you know, the town of other dots, and let's make that be clear that it's a goal of ours, you know. I mean, I was just thinking that sending out to the community, but I think sending it out to your parent, parents, you know, it's sort of levels, like, you know, parents seeing the value, you know, going on and then broader community, but.
Yeah, I I think the community is all stakeholders and, yeah, but um and and in this case, this is and and now we're talking about, I mean, a way of incorporating even the sixth graders possibly, or or lower, that way, when it's appropriate. Because that whole student voice is really something I value and and I think it's important. You know, so that they at least got a way in so that they understand what it is, I mean.
I just think that their parents that would be very impressed by adopting the life of this one is up for the teachers. So to be revisited, maybe a different lesson would never be great, and so that takes us to director's notes. Thank you. Oh, well. Junie's having a great start, we are really loving school and it's been really positive so far, just so awesome, I can see that you guys have been really working at social and really pull us in this um school like community, and it also seems like this year, you know, there had been so many years of just like hanging on by the fingernails. And this, it seems like we're like maybe starting to come out of that and reach for things like a little further beyond just that hanging on for your life, yeah. And so that feels really good.
Thank you.
I loved having Janelle and Molly in, and I would love to do that every time, or as often as we could. Yeah, and I just think it makes it come alive, and it would be great to have some couple of sixth graders here too, by seeing how well we we meet or something, but I really liked having the voices. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Um, nothing else, right? Good, great, until I'm ready, um I'm I'm very impressed by that attendance number, I don't think it's an accident. See it on the bus, I think, but I got to talk. So I mean, I, well, that's great, hold on, but I don't know what are you doing?
I echo all of these comments, and and I do say that it's sensibly, can they have a few that are reported that are agenda, that can be uh staff and students, you know, and up to you, and you bring us what you can, it'd be helpful. Yeah, that is the plan, so. Perfect. So with that, then dating time of next meeting, I propose that we meet uh in November on the sixteenth, so that we just have the one meeting in November. Nobody even will be here seven, and it sounds like um you would ask if Deb can, yeah, come to us, did you have a question? Well, do you think we're gonna have enough time to do budget stuff? I I think, you know, you know, Liz having enough time to go through it, it actually doesn't tend to take a whole lot of time on our part. Much of it is really already locked in.
Yeah.
We already have the reserve funds, that giving us opportunities to do other things.
Okay.
Uh we are going to need to develop proposals for use of surplus funds, that only because we want those of it. Uh so that's, those are in the articles, that will also need to go to the town. But I I found in the past, the the budget development process, it doesn't take. But maybe we can get the surplus numbers so that then we can. We have them already, so then we can, okay, I felt a little like uh time pressured last.
Last year, we were time pressured.
Yeah.
I, yes, we were, um I think this year, you know, under Jim's uh, you know, truly, we're we're much further along, um and we're much in a much better space as far as, you know, and I think Jim and I are in agree, you know, seventy to seventy-five percent of your budget is salary. And so we kind of know what that is, I mean, Liz may or may not come forward, you know, with some adjustments in that piece, and so uh that might be a piece of discussion, and and a lot of, unless there was something again, you have the surpluses, they talk about some maybe the big capital thing. But I'm trying to think of, like, there might be like if all of the ukuleles got broken or something, that might be something that we have to budget for, or we're gonna start a new music program, that we want to add a new instrument, so we need to bring that kind of into the budget, but other than that, it it shouldn't be a that's what's nice, it's not a major, I mean, I think, but uh so I think by November, you'll be able to have that, and then I think early December, you know, and even after Thanksgiving, early December, we might ram up a cap to have a couple of special meetings together.
Okay, I looked at the calendar and we started uh November sixteenth, and we think again, this time, get inside the budget of the next month or so. Then we have a regular meeting on December seventh, and there is the option of December twenty-fourth, a very special budget meeting if we wanted to. And then again, we need to approve the budget um by, I think, January eleventh, so we just, I I felt that we had time, but I think it's a calendar.
It feels accelerated because we haven't, we've been so far behind. I, firstly, I feel the angst, I I I do feel the anger, but we have been so far behind for so many years that um you know, this is, I think, I I I feel pretty confident we'll be able to that party.
Yeah.
I'm glad that Westminster was nice, extended that date, so.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, so then we shall, uh, sure, at seven forty-four, or thanks to everybody.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eighteen at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.